It's like Slim's got a little paper cut.
It's nothing.
Come on, man. You know I'm gonna make you tell me.
Hey, kidney transplant.
When, dude? I didn't know you were sick.
I was donating it.
You gave your kidney to a complete stranger?
Yeah, saved his life.
And save a life by being a living organ donor on matchingdonors.com.
But the cheesecake is preserved.
I noticed that.
I'm sorry.
It's fine. It's just water.
Did you meet the other?
Like the one thing you're high on?
No.
I met both of my views. And then I met Chuck earlier this week.
Like my little toy?
That's not a toy. That's for real.
I know.
I'm gonna start sitting over there.
She's afraid I'll hit her.
I think I will, too.
Well, what a crew.
Very supportive.
Thank you.
We got your back, Dottie.
Thank you.
All got quiet.
I'm gonna wait. I'm gonna eat the rest of it when Piper's talking.
One more minute.
Give me extra.
So Jamie, I need one before we get to far away.
There's two pages.
And needs one.
There are.
They're good. Am I stealing it from you?
Really good.
No, they're just.
She's been.
Why did she buy a DC's?
She's probably ordered special ordering.
Wow.
Water that. We ship it right to.
And is it really good honeydew?
It really is. Okay. Oh, you already did?
Yes.
Okay, I'm surprised. Okay, we're gonna call them. You need to order. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Yes, we do, Madam.
Sure. Okay, so the first thing we're gonna do, which is brand new, we're gonna stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance. We put a flag in here. So. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, thank you. Okay. Next thing we're gonna do, which is not on the agenda, is tell Piper, I'm gonna cry. Tell Piper how amazing she is and how much we appreciate her and the things that she's done. So we, as the board, made you a little plaque for your office.
Thank you.
This thing, okay. So that just says that you're wonderful. This is a note from the board.
Thank you.
This is a gift of appreciation from the board and the flowers.
Thank you.
So we just say that. And we really appreciate your blood.
Thanks.
So thank you so much.
Thank you, Piper.
And then let us see if this enjoys. Okay, the next thing we're gonna do is we're gonna introduce Judd Dawson, who is our new CEO. Hello. And so I had a whole speech written for him. Actually, pretty much what I wrote in the paper this week, and I apologize if you guys didn't know better, but it's kind of like last minute. So, but I know you can speak for yourself. So would you like to talk to the group?
Sure, I'll talk to anybody. So, and what was your name again?
Charles Sorensen.
Charles, nice to meet you, sir. So, Judd, and both the rest of these people have had the work in their misfortune, however they will look at it, of meeting me already and talking to me. Um, so I hail from Wyoming. That's where I'm from right now. Um, I am a physician and administrator and only working as an administrator now. I worked in lab tech before, a lot of it. And I've been in healthcare for a long, long time and got to do lots of different things. Um, I've been able to work in large healthcare corporations and critical access hospitals. Um, and feel that that has given me a very nice breadth of experience in order to brings the ability to have some change and affect some change where I want to go. Um, I love rural Wyoming, and as does my family, I have a wife and four kids. And I'm honored to be here. This is such a wonderful community. My wife and I visited at least four times before I accepted a position with the kids. And um, and found this place delightful. The team of people working in this hospital are amazing. Very fortunate community to have the people working here that you have. In the role that I'm leading right now, I am president of the hospitalist group at the company phone line provider site. Work with about five or six hospitals throughout Wyoming and Nebraska. This hospital is one of the better ones. Actually, one of the best ones I've been in. So I'm just, it's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you. And it's a pleasure to have you. We're very excited. And I know that I speak for the whole board and the Edmonton and everybody else that's here that we're thrilled to have you and we look forward to a really exciting time with you at the helm.
Thank you.
So, um, just so you know, Allison and Nick are online, too.
Hi, Allison.
And Alexis.
Hi, Alexa.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
You're free to ask me anything you want.
Ross?
Thanks. It's exciting to have somebody.
Thanks. Great.
I'm a pretty simple guy. Keep rolling.
Okay. So, Charles, any comments from you? About anything?
No, I just wanted to see you meeting.
Okay, great. Well, we're glad to have you. Thanks for coming. Awesome.
We're often lonely.
We got the cheesecake going.
Yeah, exactly.
Is there any addition or changes to the agenda?
Um, are we, are we recording?
We are. We're supposed to be. Don't worry, you're slow. Take note on that. Okay, I'm kidding. Um, I have a couple changes, but they're small and I'll wait till the end. Okay? So, um, I need a a consent for the agenda to approve the June 15th agenda.
I'll move to approve this.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
And then the minute meeting, the minute, meeting minutes for May 18th. Can I have a motion to approve those? Did we read them? Good. Motion?
I'll move.
Second? One second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, Piper? Public budget.
So on Judd's first day, we hit him with the budget.
And I'm serious.
Um.
Can you see Charles?
Oh, yeah.
So, um, and also the finance committee has looked at the budget. So you guys saw the, and approved the preliminary budget. Um, so I had some concerns as far as revenue and expenses on the budget. And so what Judd and I looked at for the budget, um, what we talked about last time and what you guys approved last time was a 5% increase to the charges. So we'll implement the 5% charge increase. Um, the revenues were based on the historical volume data. So we kept basically utilization flat, but with a 5% increase in charges.
Piper, I'm sorry. Um, for those of us who are blind, could you make that a little bit larger? Thank you. Either that or I need to sit closer.
Thank you. Um, and then, like we talked about before, department managers, um, I, Liz and I sat down with department managers, estimated their expenses. Um, managers were encouraged not to make any big increases or decreases, but basically anticipated utilization to remain the same. So there shouldn't have been any huge increases in supply utilization or pharmaceutical utilization other than just what we've seen as far as increase in supply costs overall. Um, and then we, of course, we did the capital budget as well. Um, so here are the, the hospital rate increases. That does include the room charges and then the manner room rates with a 5% increase.
And that correlates with our cost report?
Mm-hmm. That was that Medicare and Medicaid, yeah, yeah, that rate increase or those rate adjustments.
What about Manor?
Say that again.
The Manor are 5% too?
Mm-hmm.
For Medicaid?
Mm-hmm. Um, and so then we also just kept the contractual adjustments. We're estimated to be approximately the same levels as they were last year. Also the bag debt.
Thank you.
Um, so salaries and wages, we talked about this as well. You know, some positions had an increase, but for the most part, a lot of those, um, based on the salary survey are staying the same. Um, I haven't had a chance to dive into all of that with Judd yet, but I'll show him that wage index. Um, I did do what you guys asked me to do and went through all those positions, sat down with the managers, made sure they understand how those, um, those salary matrices work and made sure that everybody was kind of where they needed to be as far as experience, education, all that stuff, and made sure we had them where they needed to be. And then, um, there are a few positions with some increases. And then, of course, that $1 an hour for the CNAs at the Manor has been in place for several years. Yeah, so we left that the same. Um, FTE budget, there is no increases in FTEs, and I showed Judd the, the open positions spreadsheet that we've kept up to date with you guys. And we're having discussions about that. Um, operating expenses. We're gonna look at, of course, decreasing expenses. Um, a, a big decrease in expenses. Of course, we'd like to decrease the purchase services, which is the travelers. Um, we had a a huge expense in lab and radiology this past year with travelers, but both those areas are fully staffed right now. So bang on your gavel or something. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, we do probably expect to probably still see some in long-term care with CNAs, but hopefully, you know, we are doing CNA classes. Um, so hopefully we'll see some decrease in those areas.
And we have trainers for those.
Yes, we're doing a CNA class next week.
How many are in room?
I just was gonna ask. I think six, right, Megan?
Yeah. Great.
So again, the budget is based off, um, past experience volumes. Um, again, um, we want some of our goals that we, that Judd and I talked about is hopefully increase some observation admissions. Um, Judd wants to, you know, talk to providers about increasing some of those observation admissions to increase some of that revenue, um, increase outpatient services, and then some review of some of our service lines. And so these numbers, I quickly plugged in here just based on some of the changes that Judd and I made for, um, on the budget piece. So I'm still fighting with Meditech to get actual printouts of what I gave the finance committee. So I'll get those reprinted, but, um, we made about, uh, $450,000 increase in revenue and then decreased, hopefully, the expenses by
I think it was close to the same amount.
Same amount, yeah.
And these, in these, I'll just step in, that's okay, Piper, just because you and I work together. I, I think these are realistic expectations for what we can pull off. I, I didn't fudge, you know, because, you know, when we're doing accounting, right, you can justify a lot of things that don't necessarily make good business sense. There is, and speaking to some of the primary care providers, there's opportunities for documentation improvement, just in speaking to them already. There are places where I don't think we're getting reimbursed all the way for everything we should. There are areas where I think we can maybe bring in a couple extra patients here and there. And, and all of that put together, I think, gets us in the ballpark of that figure. And I, and I think that's being realistic. Um, you know, budgets are always our best educated guess, and this is my, Piper's best educated guess on what we can pull off.
You think, uh, maybe looking at the contracts for insurance companies?
Yeah, so I've actually, on that vein, so for health insurance for the employees, I've actually reached out to a health, uh, HR lawyer, right, that I worked with previously. He is gonna hook us up with brokers. He's gonna call me tomorrow and o- offer different options to us for what we can do. And he's, as far as I can tell, he's gonna do this first part pro bono for us, and then he's willing to contract us with us on a PRN basis going forward for anything we need. Um, so he works nationwide. He's a, like I said, he's a lawyer in HR and just has a ton of different contacts. So if he pulls this off well, I'll have him send us a contract so you guys can decide if you want to have somebody like that available PRN. But to me, having extra resources that you only have to use when you need them with no ongoing cost only makes a lot of sense.
And then the capital budget items, um, and I gave Judd a copy of this, you know, the, the capital budget items are determined with meetings with the department managers um, and the CEO, and then they're only purchased at the time, um, if, depending on the need of the situation and if there's funds available at the time. Um, so that's kind of like Judd and I said, the wish list, and it is, it just depends. But those items are out there on that capital budget list, and that's budgeted three years out, so.
And, and Piper and I have been talking about prioritizing those as we go forward. We don't want to get stunned first. It's not gonna be willy-nilly. It's gonna be, hey, we actually need this, um, like the sterilizer. Until we start doing more procedures here that require bigger expectation, I don't think we need to go whole hog on a bigger sterilizer. But, um, I'm connected with people who I think will come here and do endoscopy if that's what we decide we want to do going forward, if we can get CRNs and that kind of stuff. Um, I really think that's a possibility, but again, time-wise and budget-wise, it'll have to line up. I'd like to make everything we're already doing maxed out first before we start trying to spend a little bit of money to bring more stuff online. If we can get something to happen concurrently that doesn't cost us anything, like if he, if one of the GI guys I know is willing to come out here and just do it for the profies and not charge us anything, any minimal travel cost, then maybe we're throwing the dice at. But I don't want to pay him four grand a day like all the other CEOs I know to come out here and do it and then get the profies on top of it. That's, that's too much.
Do we need our capital budget last, last, do we need all those that we had this last year?
Like all, do we purchase, no, we didn't purchase all the things that were on the capital budget. No.
Do they, do they transfer over to this?
Yeah, because I, and a lot of things on the capital budget, too, are just like replacement items. It's somewhere to break down. Um, again, and it's a wish list. If something needs replaced, you know, if a piece of equipment.
Some anticipation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know.
Whatever.
Right. Right, yeah.
Okay.
Any questions about budget?
Good job.
Yep.
Hey, you wanna go into the financial report?
Um, so for the financials for May, inpatient days total 95. For the month, patient mix was 25% inpatient, 18% skilled, and 57% intermediate swing bed. Um, year-to-date inpatient days are 66% of budget and 60% of last year's volume. Swing bed days were 97% of budget and 93% of last year. ER visits were 110% of budget and 111% of prior year. Lab procedures were 118% of budget and 86% of last year. Radiology exams were at 105% of budget and 102% of last year. PT visits were 110% of budget and 107% of last year. OT visits were 88% of budget and 94% of last year. Home health visits, 94% of budget, 90% of last year. Manor days were 84% of budget and 94% of last year. Clinic visits were 244% of budget and 100% of last year.
Can we go back to, um, the inpatient skill? Skilled is down quite a bit compared, is it just because of the way life goes, or is it because of staffing?
Um.
Acute care side?
We don't have any staffing issues on the acute care side.
Okay, I think so, so.
We just don't have any referrals.
There's no referrals.
Yeah, it's the cycle. That's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Yeah.
Admissions in most hospitals are down, although in speaking to my friend in July, he said they were full. But they have like only 29 acute care beds there.
Is there another strain of COVID going through there?
I don't think so. They're, they started doing more surgeries, and so they need like seven beds a week to do surgeries at least. So that's part of their thing. Uh, Kimball's were down, uh, Rollins is down. Um, I think Cheyenne's is even down, too.
I think there's an increase in outpatient surgeries more, so they're just going home right away. Where if it's skilled, they need that three-day, three-night stay in acute care before they qualify for a swing bed.
When they made hips and knees, both outpatient procedures, that really dinged everybody's ability to get those fees.
Yep. So Andrew, we still have three swing and no acutes?
Um, we have one acute and three swings. This morning, we had three acutes, three swings, so. I mean, it's.
That's just a two-day.
Yep.
I guess I don't understand why the clinic visits were up quite a bit, but the revenue was less than last month. Does that make any sense?
So on some of the financial documents, we have to do a new budget, so this is preliminary. And I'm not sure we're getting paid for everything we're doing. So I'm not sure we get paid for vaccines. I'm not sure we're getting paid for procedures. Um, I'm not sure we get paid for the medicines we're administering, those kind of things. And so I've asked for some documentation and we'll take a look at it, you know?
That's revenue on clinic visits, but it's not.
No.
It's not. It's 30 to 60. It's out, so you can't look at revenue compared to charges on the month.
Right.
But just even across the board on some of the documents, there's like zeros in places where there shouldn't be zeros.
I mean, all of our good providing, you know, services, ER, lab, radiology, they're all up. It's good.
ER is always, oh.
Being there kind of the. I wondered how the, you know, the acute or the Manor.
Urgent care?
Yeah, urgent care. I wondered how that impacted that, but it doesn't seem to. Seems to be pretty steady.
Well, it should, because if they're sick enough, they're gonna send a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually they help your ER when you have an urgent care going, because more people are likely to stop and like, yeah, just being, what are you doing? What are you getting across the street, man?
Yeah, walk.
Tell your name.
Yeah, walk, run, run.
Oh, boy, I had a visual. Okay.
So operating income was a loss of 235,403 for the month and a loss of 4.1 million for the year. Depreciating expenses, uh, to date was 1.2 million. Um, net income was a negative for May of 668,309.
It's something of heart attack.
Yeah. Accounts receivable decreased last month by 174,098 and is lower, uh, than this time last year by 901,586. Uh, cash flow, uh, decreased this month by 361,630. Uh, retail pharmacy, they filled 4,692 scripts, which was a decrease from last month by 38. Um, operating revenue increased this month compared to the prior month's total. Retail pharmacies revenue was 328,089 for the month. Um, they had budgeted for this month, uh, 355,233, so they were a little bit under budget. Um, operating income for the month was a gain of 63,167. Year-to-date for the retail pharmacy was a gain of 117,095.
Finally.
Any questions about that?
When did, can we expect that? You said we had a Medicare comeback or payback. Was, you said 400,000?
Yeah, Sandy, last time I asked Sandy, she said it was around around 400,000.
And it should be coming in?
Anytime.
Okay.
It's the government.
I know. Like the checks and.
Yeah. Pretty much.
All that. Okay. On the end, finance committee report?
Whoa, are we there already?
Yeah.
Are you sure?
I'm hungry.
Okay, well, let me get that one loaded up. I think we talked about most of this. Well, on your balance sheet, um, that cash amount at the top, we always thought was, it isn't. It doesn't compare to our actual bank statement. The, uh, this month it was 4,002,3706 on the balance sheet for bank. But the bank on 6/8 of 2003, which is a day later, has 3,343,955. There's, I don't have no idea what it, that doesn't bring that across. Does anybody? No? Is it a data entry maybe, or?
So.
Are some of them CDs or something?
Well, so she's talking about the balance sheet at, for the, the month. When they do the month-end financial, versus what is actually in the bank when they run, when they just do a screenshot of what's in the bank. So this is a financial statement. Balance sheet is a financial statement when they do month-end financial statements.
Right, and it was, it was done on, for day 6, 7?
Right, so this is after they tie out the end of the month.
Right, right.
And then what, what you're, you're looking at then is just a screenshot of what's in the bank that day.
Right.
So they're not gonna match.
Okay. So which is the truth, this one or that one?
Or they both are.
Well, they both should be.
They're two separate things. Yeah, they're two separate things. Yeah.
Day apart. Okay.
Well, because this is the tieout of the month of May. Yeah, and so they're not, you're not, you're not comparing apples to apples.
Okay.
Yeah.
My only concern is for years, for years, I, um, kept thinking if that was the amount that we needed to be looking at, you know, and now I found out it's very different.
Yeah, yeah.
The balance sheet is just a snapshot in time of what it looked like that day. And even if we prepared it like on the seventh, we got the data from a week earlier.
Yeah. Yeah, this is a financial.
I get where you're asking now. I was gonna like.
For a million dollars difference is always just like, well.
Yeah.
I'm gonna take it.
And it's, I'm good, no. I was.
Um. The OT was cut in half, by the way, since we started looking at it. So that's good. And Sandy Dixon gave us some options for self-pay on free, things we could maybe do with that.
And, and did we want to talk about what Kelly had suggested, the possibility of what Kelly had suggested?
The loans?
Yeah, the going to the bank for loans.
Oh, sure. We can do that. You want to talk about that?
Or you can. It doesn't matter.
No, fine, go ahead.
I did, that was Kelly, the accountant lady. She had talked about the possibility of some of her hospitals, she, um, that she helped with, they, they actually have the patients set up, help the patient set up a loan with the, with the local bank. With the local bank, so that they can, so the hospital can get their money and then they're paying off.
And it's a lower percentage.
Lower, you know, a good rate.
Yeah.
And I like that idea, I feel like it gives some dignity to the self-pay patients and gets us our money, rather than sending it to collections.
So one crazy update to that is that I happened to be on the phone with the manager of the First Savings Bank. Just by accident and chance, I mentioned to him, did they ever hear of it? And he said, no, but he'd be very happy to talk to us if we were gonna go that way.
Oh, good, the first aid.
When I say savings?
It used to be first aid.
Yeah, first order.
What used to be first aid, yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
And then we talked a little bit about the, the grants and, um. The grants that we had are thirty-five percent match. And it's a one point two six three, three ninety-two. Here's that paperwork for it, you wanna pass that around? Everybody knows this sheet, he's doing this sheet though, so. Just so that we know how much our proportion's gonna be. One point two six three, three ninety-two for these projects. Keep it in the back of your head.
We still, we had the architect, we haven't given it to them.
No. It is, we saw what, what, what we.
Where did you put your information from?
From. It's from last month, which I. For. I think I asked, didn't I ask?
Yeah.
Go, Piper.
So this is wrong?
This was the proposal, this was a proposal of options, this wasn't the final.
It's what the board voted on.
But it was the final grant amounts after SLIP came through, but this isn't the final grant amounts that were granted.
Okay, thirty-five percent.
So this isn't true?
This was.
It's, what was?
It's around three hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I had in my head like three hundred thousand, like three hundred and forty-three thousand was the actual number.
Right. See, I remember the one point two, because I don't remember anything from there, but I like your numbers better.
Should be a lot of grants.
Yeah, we need them.
This was. This was a door. Grants were approved, they were, they were intended and then these now were what. Right. Yeah, the SLIP.
Just stick it right here and shred it. Read that. Okay, but good news, yeah. So what is three hundred and sorry?
Three hundred and seventy-four, what am I telling you? Cause the SLIP, cause the SLIP board came back with a lot more, more money for the three projects. And then we got the SLIP grant from the state, from the, for the, the full HVAC at the. Or on the oxygen project.
Okay, good.
Was that two clinics and a HVAC?
Right, and the oxygen.
The oxygen was a different grant, wasn't it?
Right.
Yeah, it was a department health.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Like it. That's it for me.
That's it for you? Okay, let's move on to quality. Paper medical staff?
That's Kim's. Kim gets to do, I know, I don't know, I don't know why I put my name there, it's Kim.
Okay, go ahead, Kim.
Um, so that's not, we have quite a few, we implemented that new telestroke, so we had the credential. Um, their provider, so we have eleven neurologists in that stack. And then the radiology hired a new, um, grad radiologist, he's in there as well, he'll start July first. Um, with the code of radiology, they went through med staff, there was nothing concerning in any of them. Um, you can see some of the credential files are big, so this isn't the first rodeo here, so.
Yeah, Blue Sky is used throughout the state, Cheyenne uses them, Kimball uses them, I think Gillette uses them.
A credentialing outfit?
Yeah, well, the Blue Sky radiology, the radiology. Yeah, so they, they are, they are a top notch bunch of people, I've worked with them since two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen.
So I think I need a motion to approve the credentialing. I'll move, second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Post to second?
I did.
And? Anyone to post? Thank you. Okay. Go ahead, Kim.
Um, going into med staff. Um, last month, we talked about some back orders. Um, Joy kind of brought to our attention that Medicaid's limiting meds to thirty day supplies before it was, um, the inhalers you can only have. I think it was twelve and three hundred and sixty-five days. Now she said that they're limiting just all meds to thirty day supply. Um, and then she's almost done with the formulary. Throughout the whole facility so that we can all be on the same page, with the number of meds that we've got, um, being passed around. Which will kind of help reduce our med errors. Um, nursing home, got a census of forty, we've got two, we're gonna get swing bags waiting. Um, we've got another new CE nurse hired, and those are the compliance and education reps. So they go around the manor, read documentation, make sure that the documentation looks good. Um, if something happened and there is no documentation, they go around and make sure that the nurses document it. And they do a lot of education, they just do quite a bit over there, so. Um, like Piper said, uh, next week or a couple weeks, we're doing a CNA class. And then we had a new LPN starting night, she just graduated, so she's working nights. Um, Carmen's just busy.
Carmen's on vacation.
I put that in the meeting, says, Carmen is always busy, that's what we're gonna put in the notes.
Um, and then another thing, Keisha, our radiology manager, um, she's working on some policies, protocols. And one of them that we talked about was stat CT scans, just working on better communication with the providers. Um, you know, if somebody gets sent over for questionable appendicitis, do we leave the IV in? Do we want them to stay, go back to the clinic, go home? You know, what is that patient supposed to be doing and what are we supposed to be doing? Um, just to make sure that if they have an IV, we're keeping that IV in so that they're not getting poked a second time if they. Ended up having an appendicitis and we pulled the IV, that they've already gotten in place. That's really it for med staff. Um, moving into quality. Um, we went over our action queue dashboard, and we went over number of temp staff, which is gonna hopefully decrease here in the next couple months. Um, but we've got five CNEs in the manor, one OCN, one RN, her contractual, so, um, she's done in there. And then four in the lab, and there's four in the lab because we've got two new labs, fresh out of school. So they need to get that training, um, to make sure that they're comfortable before we just, you know, release them. Um, we went over the credentialing. Um, on our long-term care survey, they called and had some follow-up, they were just wanting some paperwork sent in, just. What we did to correct and what have we been doing? We sent that in and I don't think we've heard anything back from them, I think she sent it in last week or so. Um, ED wait times were down, um, which is good. And. Our AR is down, that's about it.
Okay, Jamie, quality committee, um, it was great. The incidents were down, med errors were down. Um, we just had questions about finalizing. The report. Oh, everything was great.
That's a very quick meeting.
Very nice.
Very good, okay. Okay, old business, Piper, you want to talk about the GINTAC?
So we had our kickoff call last week and then this week we had a status call. Um, they're doing, starting our fact-finding stuff. Um, we uploaded like payroll files and, uh, employee information to start that process, so.
Goodness.
Well, we've only had two calls.
No, actually, the second call I actually heard, and it was kind of just like niceties and don't forget me and, yeah. Yeah, so really no progress.
Yeah, we just did some file uploads with the employee information and some historical payroll data stuff.
More assigning homework, though.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Typical.
And Monument was there and they asked to, to don't forget them kind of a thing, so they're fine. Cause of Epic, yeah. Um, debt, debt book?
Yep, so Wendy's been gathering all those, um, IT subscription agreements and uploaded them into their file or whatever. Um, Kelly's been in on those calls as well, so. Um, I think we uploaded, I don't know, sixteen or eighteen different agreements so far, so that they're. Working on that, reviewing those agreements for us, just to see if they meet that requirement. Um, Kelly uploaded the previous lease agreements we had from the audit last year, so. I move forward with that.
Any questions? Okay.
I think we should split.
Split up, why?
I wanna meet new people, people who need me.
Meet new people, you're my love kidney.
You only need one of me, man, and you have two. There are plenty of people out there who are dying because they don't have one.
Really?
You'll be giving the gift of life.
I could be a hero.
Yeah, it's all win-win up here, buddy. Why don't you go and save a life, pal?
You're doing the right thing.
New business is the strategic plan for twenty-three, twenty-five, and so. Piper and I, Piper's gonna talk about this document, all I wanna say about it is that our strategic plan is old, okay?
I emailed this out to all the board members.
Right, and I emailed out the old one, Keisha had to find it, just so you can get a look at it. So I think that, um, this is just a kickoff to say, we need a new one, we need to start working on it. I think we'll start working on it next meeting, okay? I think that, um, we talked about maybe governance being involved as well as to do some of the backside work to, to move it along a little bit faster. But, um. Piper, go ahead and talk about this one.
So this is the document that the management team has, so the department managers and admin team have. And we have worked off of these kind of pillars, quality, safety, service. Um, financial, people, growth, community. Um, and so these, like I said, you know, this was one that we've talked about, like the website. Growth, you know, to increase, you know, get people to. Know we're here, know our service lines, we've talked about that a lot. Um, staff education, um, more transparency, get. More communication, um, out to staff, those types of things. The culture survey, we've talked about that, um. You know, we did the culture survey and then each of the departments kind of did their action plans based on that. So we had set some goals based on those different things. Um, you know, the self-pay help. Um, and research, you know, we did those discounts for those self-pay, we tried those different things, um, so those were done. And then, of course, the AR and stuff, um, goals that were set with the finance committee. Um, so those things were in here. So this, like I said, this is kind of what the management team has had and has kind of worked off a little bit, so. Um, you know, Action Q was implemented during this time, CNA training. Um, we've had a few CNAs, do CNA two class, MedAid class, um, and the manor utilizes MedAids quite a bit. Um, to help fill that gap. Then, of course, the surveys, um, all that, the improvement on the different areas of the H caps and ED caps. So, um, whatever, however you guys wanna. The management team, you just gotta let us know how you want us to move forward with the management team. Cause we talk about it at manager meetings and then they take it back to their departments and have their departments set goals. So you just have to tell us how you want us to move forward with. The different pieces.
Sure, so I think that we, excuse me, our homework needs to be to look at this document. And then come up with ideas for the next meeting about where we wanna focus and what we wanna include. And then in addition to that, I know that Judd has, has ideas, do you wanna talk about those or we just wait?
How about you give me a little time to finish and find them? Because a lot of stakeholders involved in this stuff I wanna move around. Um, and then I'll have, kind of, if it's okay, I'll present next meeting some of my thoughts on what strategy should look like as well. And then we can work together to make it happen.
Great.
And make sure you agree and I didn't, like, go in the wrong direction.
That's perfect.
Judd, what were you thinking?
Any other thoughts of discussion right now?
Often you guys reference this like throughout the year.
Um, we talk about it monthly at our department manager meeting, you know, like, especially when we talk about like survey results. I know acute care looks at their survey results as far as, like, whether it's, what, if their scores have dropped on discharge planning. Or, um, if their ED surveys have dropped, um, you know, the long-term care surveys don't go out that often, so.
Every six months.
So, I mean, I know they, it just depends, um, some of the culture, culture survey action plans, um, are more. Some of their do-it projects are more on a monthly basis, so they, they're doing stuff more often, it just depends on what the stuff is. But we talk about it almost monthly at, at monthly department manager meetings and get updates from the departments. Um, especially if they're doing do-it projects, stuff like that.
I think. Go ahead.
Do you have recommendations for strategic planning of any kind, based on from your perspective, or your team's perspective?
Well, I think, um, I think all the departments are gonna have different ideas depending on what their goals are. You know, for each department, each department's gonna have different stuff that they wanna work on. Um, and then I think then that needs to fit into what.
Yeah.
The organization has, as a whole is, um, you know, if we have, again, different. Pillars that we wanna work on, and then each department's gonna have pieces of that that are gonna build up into those different pillars. As far as whether it's, you know.
So each manager. Does this every month, looks at it?
Well, we review it, yeah, I mean.
And idyllically, we'd like to get it so that the frontline people understand this at a level that's appropriate for them. So they understand what their end goal really is. A lot of times. I, I think we've all experienced where we've had somebody tell us like, hey, this is what needs to happen, and you're like, uh. Yeah, how, how do I make that occur? So breaking it down into bite-sized chunks, a- as we go forward, and, and making strategic plans that are a little more specific sometimes. Uh, with great metrics is, is important in my opinion.
And I think that we'll have like the basic plan, but I think there'll be little subdivisions and then there'll be specialties depending on what departments are. So I think we just need to come up with the solid, like, what do we really wanna focus on and then take it from there? And I think it's an opportunity for us to really make a good change, like, we can keep the stuff that works.
Yeah.
You know, the ideals that are always there forever, but, but this is our opportunity to make big changes in how we. Um, incorporate the employees and, and change the culture.
And, and from my point of view, I really like the specifics to come from the frontline people, because they're the ones that do that job every day. So like, our goal is to come up with those big overriding ideas, overarching notions, and, and the guardrails and the goalposts that go along with that. And let them kind of build it out stepwise and, and get there. And because, because if they have buy-in and if they help create it, they're gonna own it and they're gonna make it whole.
Right. Perfect. If any other things for anybody, like any ideas? Statements, topics?
You want us to bring our ideas next week?
Next week, next month.
My only statement is that three quarters of the people on this strategic plan aren't here anymore. So I really like the idea of you guys are going, the new team is gonna bring it back and the new managers. Because they're gonna have different priorities than the old managers, so I think it's, uh, I, I'm. I'm happy to see a lot of this change and make it more, uh, because if it's not relevant to those people, they're not gonna work towards it. So I'd like to see all, your new team work to make it more relevant.
I agree, that's great, yeah.
Thanks.
And I actually don't think that, since it's a strategic, uh, plan, by definition, it's a long-term plan. So I don't really think that it's something that needs to be done super, super fast. So take your time, make it right, to your point, that, you know, it's something that you're gonna use to change direction and culture, we should make it right. So take the time, that's needed to do that.
Anybody else?
I hope that we, as the whole board, get to be involved in it, that it's not just, I don't know, what you said.
I don't know, governance is just gonna do paperwork, basically. You know, so, now this is a whole team project.
So, thank you.
So for clarity, like, as, as far as what you want us to gloss over, um, on this for next week length, what specifically are we?
So for clarity, like, as, as far as what you want us to gloss over on this for next week length, what specifically are we? You want us to kind of give you a put-on, essentially?
Well, look at the old one.
Okay.
And do some comparison, and then I would look this document over and get a feel for where the staff are coming from, for the frontline folks. And then see how we can coordinate, you know, those bit, like Judd said, the bigger topics that we can break down so that it's relevant to the people that need to know it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. Moving right along, governance committee.
We didn't meet.
Yeah, we didn't meet. That was easy.
Yeah.
Yeah, again.
Foundation.
We are gonna go to a training, go a board training.
Oh, that's right, thank you.
Or twentieth or something.
The twentieth and the twenty-first. It's the twenty-first, all day.
Twenty-first is all day, the other one is four hours in the evening.
Right.
On the same day.
No, no.
Okay, it's the ninth meeting.
Yeah. So I heard you guys, it's thirty bucks, you pay at the door. Scal is Mary Martin, she comes from UW.
She's really good.
So I saw, I saw a thing that said that you have to be signed up by yesterday.
Don't worry about it.
I, yeah, she, she didn't make us do that last time either, so.
And I asked her, what happens if you can't come? Cause I'm, you know, she said, just call me, tell me you can't come.
I think she lost her head count so that she could get her paperwork and, you know, enough paperwork for everybody.
Yeah, the all-day version is next Thursday.
I thought it was Wednesday.
It's Wednesday. Wednesday.
So the all-day version is on the twentieth or this Wednesday?
The twenty-first, and the half-day version is on the twentieth.
What do you think?
I can't, I canceled my AID deed for this.
What, yeah.
Yeah, she's really good.
Yeah, okay, great. Connie, anything from Foundation?
Foundation was my first meeting and it's basically reorganization. There's lots of, several new members that are coming on. They're, the big thing they talked about was the golf tournament and, it rained all day, no, they, that was my take, but.
Did anybody golf?
Mm-hmm, they did.
Yeah, there was ten teams.
Yeah, good, good.
Did anybody from the Foundation show up?
No.
So who? So tell me who is?
Mark, I thought Mark was gonna be there, cause he golfs, so I don't.
I wondered, wasn't it?
Who are the new names on the Foundation?
Ah, remember his last name, but he's from, um, he does. Didn't have a gallbladder, no, I'm kidding. That's usually how nurses remembered things, right? Diagnosis, oh, had a gallbladder, yeah, anyway. Kathy is another new one, those were the two new, Joanne and Mark were there and then me. Talked about them taking over the bookkeeping that had been done by.
I gladly handed it over, I just have all that stuff right to her.
I thought it was my first meeting, I had no idea what, oh, okay.
Sir George is still there, though, right?
George is still there, however, George is saying he's gonna move.
All the spreadsheets.
George Matieri, yes, so Georgina Matieri. Kathy isn't, yeah.
I don't know, you don't know.
What's your last name?
Okay, you're gonna make me look.
We don't have.
First meeting, so my first meeting.
Do you want me to take some of this stuff?
Yeah. Cause I don't remember.
I've been working closely with them on some things.
Oh, good.
And so it's Katie, and she works for, with Mark Selty. And so.
Katie Putnam.
And she's been working really well, so they're taking over, over everything. And I just took all the money from the golf tournament, I don't have quite all the numbers, but I believe, I believe Sinek estimated about five thousand dollars was brought in, we had forty golfers and.
I think they should. In a silent auction.
And all the sun things planned, it was, I know, and each hole had something. That, what impressed me was that if you got a hole in one, you could get ten thousand dollars. I don't golf, but I thought about it.
You had to buy the insurance.
But like Denise said, and correct me if I'm wrong, Connie, this is the first time they've taken over their positions. The secretary's the secretary, the treasurer's the treasurer, they're doing their agenda, that, you know, because that was all done by Marie before. So that's a great thing, I think.
Oh, it's fabulous.
So like I said, my first meeting going, huh, so, yeah, that was good.
Good. Thank you. Ethics.
You can take that one in, no, that was your first meeting.
It was my first meeting, so. We talked about the ambulance stuff, mostly, so you can fill in the rest.
Ongoing, uh, we talked a lot about ongoing, uh, mental health issues. And I, I guess, to me, the biggest thing that came out of it is that we're gonna try and meet with Angie and, a contingency, are gonna try and meet with the commissioners and just really talk about how this is impacting our people. Not just our hospital, our people are left with no right, you know, whatever, and it's, it's, it's just kind of a mess. So please jump in and fill in anything else.
Yeah. Yeah, we were just talking about the Title twenty-five, Title twenty-five patients and how we get them to WBI because they don't really have a medical necessity that makes a need for an ambulance. So essentially takes an ambulance from our community at that time. A lot of other counties in the state utilize their sheriff's department for these transfers because they're not, you know, a medical necessity thing. So we're gonna go to the county commissioners and kind of pass that on because our ambulance will not be transferring these to WBI. They'll do hospital, the hospital transfer, but, so.
There's a definite gap.
And this has been an ongoing thing for years, even before this ambulance service, so.
And I'm set to start meeting with the ambulance service hopefully next week, for study to get back to me for Gillette MS.
Yep.
Yep, perfect. Okay, me, okay. I'm gonna fill in the agenda changes that I had before, and they're very simple. One is that Connie retired this week from her long-term job, so we wanna congratulate you. That was one you needed. It's so exciting. Yeah, you would still be talking to them, I think. The other, the other thing is, is that I set up a meet and greet with Judd at the senior center on Tuesday, the twentieth, at twelve-thirty. Uh, we're gonna serve cookies and whatever, they're, they're very graciously supplying us with the cookies. So it'll give us a chance to get out into the community faster than if we had to wait another week or two, we just wanna start, okay? So, and I know the community's anxious to see him, so that's where we're gonna start, at the senior center. And anybody that can come, please come, okay? I, I would love for you to come. And I know it's last minute, but it gives the community enough time to know. I mean, Denise is gonna put it on the website, she's gonna, did you call the radio? No, tomorrow, tomorrow, radio tomorrow. Um, we're announcing it publicly at the meeting and so hopefully we'll get folks to come out. It's also Domino Day, so I think.
And Bridge.
And Bridge.
And Bridge. Wow.
So this way we made it to twelve-thirty so we can do it on.
It's a bonanza.
Do I have to complain, Dawn?
Oh, good point. You might have to teach me some of the rules.
No, you have to stay with me for.
Sorry. From twelve-thirty to what, Dottie?
About an hour, depending on what happens.
I'm hoping some of the seniors will stick around.
They'll come in after.
Oh, one more thing, I had Denise put a folder in to our share drive that says, Board Documents in Review. So I put the documents in there from the governance committee that we haven't approved yet. I put last month's minutes in there for you guys to look at. And also the CEO documentation that we still haven't approved, but it's done and it's in there. So if you get a chance, go in and look, per, you know, go over the documents and know what's there. Board Documents in Review. I wanted a place to put stuff where we didn't have to search a lawyer board, okay?
Yeah.
Once we approve those, I'll move them out, put them in the appropriate places and then we'll start over.
So that's where you can put that grant information. I've heard of making, thank you.
Yeah, you could do that, that's good, thank you.
So Dottie, will we vote on that next meeting?
Vote on.
Those changes from.
If we, if the governance committee gets them ready to go, yes.
What are we doing?
The documents that are in there are documents that we didn't approve yet.
Okay.
So we, we can bring them to the next board meeting and discuss them.
Okay.
But in the meantime, you guys need to go in and look at them, okay? So I just made it a little more convenient, that's all.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's about it for me, I just, you know, Judd's been here since Tuesday, we've been working together. He works more with paper, obviously, but trying to catch him up to speed, get him, you know, get him feet wet, showed him our little share driver, we look around for things.
Meeting plant garden.
He planted a garden, just so.
He planted a garden.
Knows, why don't you tell us about that?
So the team of leadership here at the hospital, him, I believe it was, had the idea for some team building. So I'm gonna give her credit where credit is due. And. Get credit, we, I think we had a great time. And, and so we made two trips to the bongars, got some plants. Um, in the course of working out there, we noticed the tree was really dead. We didn't notice that when we first started digging stuff up, we had maintenance help that too. Um, him uprooted that and threw it aside, so just be aware, community, him is a force to be reckoned with. And then we planted some lilac bushes there and we're gonna rock that in soon, the rock is getting ordered. Uh, and then we're gonna have another team building exercise where the team goes out there and we help shovel that all in and get to talk about stuff that isn't necessarily all work-related and, and really forge some bonds and relationships that help us move the dial forward. And it's really exciting, cause I think it looks way better already than before.
Oh, it's beautiful. I noticed as soon as I walked out, I didn't.
They have a purpose, we're getting to the door, we're not gonna look.
That's okay.
That's what I was doing, JV, I was so late, I didn't even look at flowers, I'm just like, ah, I gotta get there.
So the other thing we did today.
I looked at it.
Hey, guys, wait. I hate, but anyway, just so you know, also for the public's knowledge is that we had a two-thirty meet and greet with Judd and the admin team. We had a three-thirty meet and greet with Judd and the employees that could come. And so that's why our next step is the community meet and greet on Tuesday, so it all went well. Okay. Items for the future is the Yellowstone annual meeting, which.
And Kim are going too. The risk management conference, a lot of it's on cybersecurity and.
There was a wrong-site surgical thing on there that, yeah, but.
Since we're not doing that.
Might be beneficial in the future, you never know. Might decide to just start hacking, there's always a lot of networking with our facilities, risk managers.
Legitimately, if we had a new war, we could do hips and knees and not too long future state, like, not this year future state, but in the five-year, three to five-year out future state, hips and knees could be on the agenda.
We're optimistic, baby.
I am an optimist, but I am able to pull some of that off on a pretty regular basis.
Good.
So you'll be go, going Monday to Thursday, right?
Yeah, we'll be back Thursday.
Be back Thursday, okay, good.
They do a lot of closed claim reviews, which is kind of educational to see what other people.
Sure.
Have, yeah, yeah, so we can be like, oh, that's good to know.
Well, collect all the information you can bring back, you know, like if you have handouts, and then don't forget the pens for the ball.
Yep, sure.
Okay. Okay.
I do have an item for the future that just came today. Um, the Twenty-One Wellness Prevention Coalition met. Judd was able to join us. So, um, July twenty-second, we are going to do, and it will be in conjunction with the county fair opening. We're gonna do a color run. We've decided to change the route up a little bit, we're gonna start at the fairgrounds. Um, there will be stations around, route's not really set in stone, but there will be different stations representing the different aspects of, just lost the name of it, oh, well, anyway, um, so.
Forces of strength?
Thank you.
Where'd that go?
Forces of strength, yeah.
Yeah, and so, um, one of the things that we'll do is we'll have some kind of event things happening at the start and finish as well, hopefully, some, maybe, maybe a bouncy house and so forth. So registrations will, should start coming out, if you're interested in helping throw color at people.
The, the dunk tank will be for the employees, but we could do a dunk tank there if you want, I'm a little hop in a dunk tank.
Yeah.
Will this be directly following the parade?
It will be in the evening, it'll be an evening activity, we're looking to start at six. Um, and basically it goes, you know, kind of out to the, oh, highway patrol up, up through town and that's where the route, I'm not certain, probably up to the annex, county annex, back down the hill, under the, you know, little, anyway, that's.
How's it gonna start?
Pardon?
Where do you want to start?
At the fairgrounds, we're gonna start and end at the fairgrounds, walk, run, crawl, whatever you can do. So if anyone is interested in being part of the stations, like I said, throwing color at everybody, I'm told that's the fun part. Um, or, you know, handing out water, um, and some of that, please, please let me know, cause I'm in charge of the gathering people. So, I'll be calling the budget.
I'd like to add to that, that Denise is going to forward every activity that goes on here to me, the figure. And I'm gonna forward it to you guys and I'm going to encourage the board members to attend as much as you can. Because we wanna be the face of the hospital to the community along with the employees, so.
I can just sit and tell the board if you want.
Good idea, thank you.
All right, delegate, delegate.
Yeah, so because, because I think that it's important for us to be out there and for people to know us because I've heard over and over and over again that we don't know who you are, we don't know what you do, we know you come once a month, we have no idea. You know, so pretty soon they're gonna know. Today was a good start, so, that's great, Connie, thank you.
Yeah. Anything else you could think of?
We're thinking about maybe like sidewalk chart art.
That's right.
Yeah, having a sidewalk chart art contest for the kiddos at some point.
Or anybody.
Yeah, or anybody, um, related around the theme of like self-wellness and, you know, we're kind of working on it. We're thinking maybe tomorrow can be better, might be our motto for this one, and so maybe you could even do art around that, you know? And really help people build into themselves a chance to, um, be less swayed and less reactive in the moment. Um, the statistic I heard most recently, that one in three young ladies under the age of fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, somewhere around there, have completed suicide. So the world is in an astoundingly bad spot. And, and so we were talking about our goal, if we can save one of those kids and convince them that there's another way to look at life, we've succeeded. And so that's what we were talking about, and I think that's all super good stuff for the community and just society as a whole.
Yep, really good.
We thought it was a nice, we've tried it different times alone, and so it was suggested that maybe we put it with Fair Weekend. We wanna give it a try and see how it works, I like, but I think it does sound a lot more fun to, and, you know, hey, tagging in on someone else's advertising is always good, so.
Great.
There you go.
Good idea. Anything else from that perspective, okay?
Oh, actually, can I add one, ask one thing before I forget, I'm sorry. Can you make suppliers up? Cause I'm gonna try and go around with some of the businesses in the community, I'll hang them up as I go, if you hook me up with suppliers.
Okay.
Please and thank you.
Great, good idea.
Well, put it this way, I know.
Okay, if there's, if there's nothing more right now, I would like to suggest that we take a ten-minute break before executive session if no one has any objections.
Two minutes.
I'm so.
So I, I need a motion for a ten-minute break. And we'll be back at quarter of seven and then we'll move this to
Why don't we make that motion that we, you know, in terms of moving into it now rather than doing a motion in ten minutes?
That's fine, sure, go ahead.
But I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, thank you, thank you guys for coming.
Thank you.
Good to see you guys.
Thank you.